We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call this is the board meeting in district 544 and a quarter. Click to be take role please.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knutson.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Here.
Matthew Lumke.
Here.
Missy Hermes present. Steven Biggison.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thanks. We have a resolution on acknowledgements. Thank you to Charles and Linda McFarland TK Property Management and Timothy and Penny Ravelstead for their donations to the ALC Student Advisory. Could someone offer that resolution for its adoption?
I'll offer that resolution for its adoption.
In a second.
Oh, second.
And Missy take role.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lumke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Biggison.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
We're going to back up one. Can I get a motion to approve our agenda this morning?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on it? All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Alright, our agenda is approved. So we're going to move on to our reports and we have Derek Abrams, our activities director at first.
Well, good morning.
Good morning.
We are wrapping up another season and then obviously a school year. We have just five athletes still participating and that will be tomorrow and Wednesday down at State Golf Meet. But other than that, track just wrapped up and everything else. So it's, that was a good time to report on this. Again, on the top, you can see our numbers. Our numbers continue to grow, which is a great thing. I was looking back even further years. I put the last five years on here. And I looked back to, I think it was my second year seventeen, two thousand seventeen eighteen. And spring is always that tough season. Kids are getting tired. They don't seem to be as big of activities, at least as far as we have a lot of spectators. We have a lot of the hype and things like that. And in two thousand seventeen eighteen, we only had a hundred and ninety kids participating in the spring sport. So we're about a hundred up there now from what we were just seven years ago. So the numbers are very healthy. Again, I say this every meeting, I look especially at the girls' sports because that seems to be something where across the state, I see the struggles with that and keeping the numbers up. But that hasn't really been too much of an issue for us in any of the seasons. And it's kind of evens full. You get bigger classes that graduate or come in and things like that. But I'm very happy with those. Not all of the CLC Sportsmanship Awards were posted yet. I think they've all voted, but they haven't posted yet so far. I think it was only three of them. But boys tennis, they get sportsmanship, so we continue to do very well in that area. You'll have to take out the scholar athletes. I did print the ones that we currently have. Again, that wasn't an update. That's actually last year's. So if you're looking at some names, I copied this and then I replaced the names with this year's. And so that's, those are last year's. We do, I will say this, that we've had so far, I believe, six all-state academic athletes just this spring, which is the highest level they can reach. And again, our teams continue to do very well with the academic, team academic awards. Every fall, I report on that from the previous year. We've, we're given two by the Coach Association, two plaques to put all the plates on. And in the last six years, we've filled up four. We've had to purchase two more. They give us two, we've had to buy the next two because I don't want to take them down yet because they're not that old. To be honest with you. So we continue to do very well. Our athletes continue to do very well academically. The CLC Performers of the Week, that is up to date. A couple notes on there. With, with that, we had three school records that got broken this spring. One was in golf. Ann Kaderkis down in St. Cloud, it wasn't even her home course, down in St. Cloud shot sixty-seven, which is a minus five. Anybody that golfs knows that's pretty amazing, especially in April and on a course that she's not familiar with. We also had two records that were broken just the last two weeks in track. One was the four-by-one-hundred girls and both of these are about twenty years old, twenty-year-old records. In the four-by-one-hundred, Ruby Ellison, Rachel DeBrigo, Maya Feer and Siri Smithstedt broke that record about a week ago. And then in the CLC meet that we hosted here on May twenty-third, the four-by-eight-hundred boys team. If you saw, if you were at that track meet, this is all the CLC schools. These are the big schools. These are, these are good track schools. It wasn't even close. I mean, it was, the next person was like coming around the turn on this relay that, you know, a full length of the track away. And they broke a twenty-year-old school record and that was David Ronadick, Jayden Miller, Logan Bradenberg and Tommy Erickson. And only one senior in that, that whole group. And for the, for the girls, just one as well. So that, that was outstanding. As far as state results, Shane Zierden just on Saturday, or on Friday actually, for the triple jump. Triple jump, he finished second in state. Great accomplishment. Just over an inch short of the school record. So he was trying really hard. He knew what the state record, or the school record. He knew what the school record was and just, just came up a little bit short. He also finished fifth in the long jump. And Jayden Miller finished second in state in the eight-hundred. And then a few other items that I just wanted to mention real quick. And you can see all the other state qualifiers from this, this spring, including one team, which was our adaptive bowling team. And for the first time that I can remember, every single athlete, we have nine athletes on our adaptive bowling team. Every one of them qualified. They don't necessarily, they don't qualify as a whole team, but we say the whole team went because all nine of them qualified in one of the events to go to state. So that was a great job by our adaptive bowling team.
Do you have their names too?
I can, I did not list, I was going to list them as a team, but sorry about that. Yep. And that was in early April when they went down there for that. A few other items. Again, for drama and our plays, just a wonderful year. And theater, if you remember me standing up here a couple of years ago, it was a concern, not because of anything that we were doing here, but coming off of COVID. And that really, drama really took a hit. As opposed, sports, we really rushed back and we wanted back out there and we got back out there. Drama, really hard to do in masks and everything else. So, and we had a couple of years there of kids that really weren't exposed to it. So it, it took a little bit to bounce back. And they did just an outstanding job from Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat to chemically imbalanced one-act play, which came just a couple of points away from making it to state for the one-act play. And then of course, Twelve Angry Men, they did a phenomenal job in the spring play. They also announced our Fall Musical, which will be Mary Poppins this, this fall. So kids are really excited to hear that. Fishing League, which is actually run through community ed, but it's all of our students. Again, huge numbers for that. So they actually kick off this Thursday and will be running through this summer. So another very successful program. And actually, if you go back to that front page of trap shooting, again, our numbers, we have a lot of kids in that too. Now, I added those number, I add those numbers with that because it's another activity kids do. Of course, a lot of those kids are also athletes and they, and they kind of, they can do both. So it's not just one or. But trap shooting and fishing and now our archery program, all of those are very big right now. We also have, and most people see this and we, because there's usually the signings and different things that we do. We still have a number of athletes that are continuing on with their activities, which is exciting to see. Some of them go into that even as a profession, not participating necessarily, but either through coaching or through other, some other aspect. I think we have over seventy now current, currently seventy Fergus grads that are still participating in their high school, the activities they did in high school while in college. But even more exciting was this year, talking to our seniors. We have about eight of them that were in all of our plays and in the theater. We have four of them right now, which are currently going into theater as far as, you know, when you look at being a producer, directing, things like that, or even continuing to act. And so that, obviously that, like I just mentioned, that theater program is really taking off. And if you are interested, Jackson Buckingham, who you, if you've gotten any of our plays, you'd be familiar with. He's been in our lead roles the last two years. If you go to Blue Stem at all in the summer, which was, it used to be Trollwood. They are doing Addams Family this summer.
Do you want?
They're doing Addams Family and Jackson got the lead role of Boomerang, which he had here two years ago. So I know there's a big group of us, his directors, some, some of his friends and some staff members. We're all going up in late July to go watch him. So he's really excited about that. When I talked to him about a week ago and I asked him how that's going, and this is what he's going into. So he's kind of interning there and he's, he's helping with the entire production from, he goes, I'm, I'm helping plan things and then I also sweep the stage afterwards. So he's doing a little bit of everything with that. So it's really exciting to see all those things. Do you have any questions or other things, topics?
Any questions for Derek?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to our fiscal year twenty-five budget review with.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
First off, I can, I'll start out with some of the assumptions that go into the budget. And here's a list of the revenue assumptions that we have in there. And enrollment projection, I'm projecting about two thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight students. This is down point five seven percent. So it was, it's three thousand five for this year, two thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight for next year. As you know, our general ed aid is based on number of students. And so gen ed formula aid increase for next year is two percent. Special ed cross subsidy will be about forty-four percent, which is way up based on what the, what was passed in the fiscal year twenty-three legislature. Some of the deductions in revenue for this next year include operating capital and LTFM revenue, which will be used to pay our debt service payments for Lincoln. Also rental and service income from the nine-three-five co-op will be going away. ECF funding, otherwise known as, or also called the Emergency Connectivity Funding, will also be ending. This was COVID funding that we, we've been receiving for the last several years to help pay for technology devices such as Chromebooks. This amounted to about two hundred and forty thousand last year alone. And so this will need to be coming out of our pockets going forward. So we have worked with Mike Donahoe. He's done a nice job of changing up the schedule for the device replacement so that we don't have to spend as much annually. We're stretching out the, the length of the, the use of the devices to, just so we don't have to spend as much each year in replacing those. Special ed funding that I got in here for assumptions is that we will get approximately fifty percent, so forty to fifty percent of our share of the fund balance for nine-three-five co-op. That's about six hundred and fifty-seven thousand is an approximate number. We won't know for sure until probably November or so, once their audit is completed. We will also be retaining all of our federal funding, which currently goes to the co-op now. This will be about seven hundred and ninety-seven thousand. And then we will also be retaining about four hundred thousand in gen ed aid that we give to them for tuition billing. And so we will be able to retain a lot of that revenue by keeping special ed services in-house. We will also be getting some REED Act funding that was just passed in the legislature. And then also interest earnings are projected to be about six hundred and fifty thousand for next year. This year in fiscal year twenty-four, we had a hundred and fifty thousand in the budget and we end up, I think we're at about eight hundred thousand because interest rates have just been extremely high this year. And so I'm projecting that to continue into next year. And so I've got about six hundred and fifty thousand in there for next year for revenue. On the expenditure side of things, our property and liability insurance premiums are going up by about twenty-four percent. And this is similar across the state due to storms and other casualties in the upper Midwest. We also had an increase in our busing contract with Out or Till Coaches. It's about three and a half percent increase for regular transportation and about seven percent for special ed. We also have increases in our budget for contract settlements, both union as well as individual contracts. There are various staffing changes, some additions as well as some reductions. And then the budget also assumes that we're going to be using up all of our LTFM and capital or operating capital revenue for next year. And so anything beyond that would then need to come out of the reserves that we have assigned for those projects. It also assumes that we are able to incur all of the furniture fixtures and equipment expenditures for Lincoln in fiscal year twenty-four. So that would be mainly the furniture, but also then the playground equipment. I, as I mentioned, we are retaining some of our revenue for special ed, but this also means that we have additional expenditures as well for next year for keeping the, the special ed services in-house. So a lot of those expenditures are, the, probably the biggest one is speech. We have a lot of expenditures for speech. There's also occupational therapy and all the various disabilities is how it's quoted. And so we do receive some reimbursement for that, but it won't be reimbursed until the following year. There's also going to be additional REED Act expenditures for this next year. Seventy-five thousand, I believe, is the amount that Amelia had given to me early on as far as what we can expect for additional expenditures. ESST, which is Earn Safe and Sick Time for support staff, mainly for the subs, is included in the budget. I've got twenty-five thousand in for that. And then I've also got forty thousand in for potential franchise fees on city utilities. This is kind of an unknown at this moment, but if that five percent increase goes through, it would cost us about forty thousand. So that's what I've got in for the main assumptions for fiscal year twenty-five. Here's a glance at the general fund. Expected revenues are forty-one million, eight hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-eight. Of course, the majority of that is state revenue, coming in at a little over thirty-three million. On the expenditure side, forty-two million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven. And so overall for next year, this represents a deficit of eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-eight. But keep in mind, this is taking on the additional special ed internally and we won't be reimbursed until a year later. When I did the budget, I kind of separated out the new special ed expenditures. And so if we weren't taking on that, the special ed for next year, we'd actually have a slight surplus of about three hundred and thirteen thousand for next year. So any questions on that? Here's a look at IQ Academy. Our goal is to balance the budget here, so for revenue, projecting four million, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight on both revenues and expenditures. This is based on a projected enrollment of six hundred and eleven ADMs or average daily membership numbers for IQ. On the food service fund, here again, attempt to balance the, the budget. Mails will be paid again by, it'll be free mails again for next year, paid by the states and also by the federal government. And then of course, we do sell à la carte items and so we do have other revenue coming in through that. And so that's right now, projecting a balanced budget. On the community ed fund, projected revenue is one million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and fourteen. Projected expenditures are one million, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eighty-four. This leads to a deficit of forty thousand, nine hundred and seventy, however, like we'll just mention this. As you all know, Mary Mattson does a great job with her programs and promoting them and offering excellent programs. And, and so whether or not we see this deficit, we'll, we'll just wait and see because she does such an excellent job with bringing in revenue and extra funding, so. Oh, and I should mention too, that this deficit that we're seeing here is really based on mostly ECFE and school readiness. But Mary still brings in extra revenue sometimes to offset some of the. Building construction fund, we don't have any projects planned for this fund next year, so it's all zeros there. And on the debt service fund, projected revenue, three million, eight hundred and seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine and projected expenditures of three million, five hundred and seventy-five thousand, fifteen, for a surplus of two hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and twenty-four. And so if there's any questions or anything you guys want me to change, I can certainly look at that. If you guys don't have any other changes, then I'm fine with you going ahead and approving the budget later on in the meeting. But if there's something to look at, then we can wait until the next meeting as well. So any questions?
Looks good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, we'll move on to Kirby Anderson with the 544 Foundation Finance and Activities.
Yes, I'll start with finance. We met on Thursday, May twenty-third. And that's probably one of the reasons why there wasn't a lot of questions because a lot of these assumptions were reviewed and a lot was flushed out at that meeting. So, so I won't go into any detail because Renee has already done a really good job of, of going through all that. The activities meeting, we did meet on Thursday, June sixth and we went with Derek. And we went through a number of items on, on the, on activities. And I think that Jeff had gone through and recapped that pretty well. Covered everything from coaches to activities, robotics, marching bands. It was a number of things and I think you did a nice job of recapping. I think you took notes and recapped that. So, so I'm not going to go through and spend any time in detail of that. But, but we did spend an hour and a half going through, over all those issues. And the last one is 544 Foundation. We met on May ninth. The big news is that the fund balance now at the foundation is over two point two million. The two million dollar mark was broken because we got a hundred and sixty-four thousand from a former graduate of Fergus Falls alumni and also former board member Mark Wing out of his estate of a hundred and sixty-four thousand. Some other couple items, recap the Senior Recognition Night that was held on May sixth. And the, the next big item is the Legends Golf Tournament, which is next month on Friday, July twelfth. And the foundation will be meeting this Thursday. And I think that we have a request that we're floating around right now for a grant for the, for half of the Lincoln Playground. So, so that's my report. Any questions or comments?
I think so, thanks.
Thank you.
And then Melanie Cole, the Special Ed Co-op Region One and meeting confirmed.
All right. We did not have any confirmers since the last meeting. Region one is just the standard operations with what schools are coming on board with the systems and staffing. Nothing of note really for, for this board. And then Special Ed Co-op, I attended my last Special Ed Co-op meeting. There was nothing of substance discussed during the, the general meeting. So that was, yeah, just they, we meet after and, and talk about the next steps forward. So, so they meet after me and Renee leave. Okay, that's it. Any question?
So this will be the last one then?
That was my last one, yeah.
Okay, so from now on, I'll say Melanie Cole, Special Ed, not Co-op, right?
Well, I was, I put that down for work session question. Just we did want to designate a leading leader to just kind of, but I don't know. I don't know necessarily what part of the operations we'd report on, but that's a good question. So we'll think and talk about that. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Missy Hermes with Curriculum Review and Policy.
Curriculum Review does not meet again until October, but I'm sure it'll be interesting to keep up with the REED Act and how that is affecting our district. Policy Committee has not met, but I know will be meeting this summer. And I just wanted to add one other thing. I've been meeting throughout the year with the American Indian Parent Advisory Council. And so Lynn Johnson has been coordinating that, has been the liaison. And they've done a lot of great things this summer, or this, during the past year. And it looks like next year is going to be pretty busy too. But she started a newsletter that was online that went out and, and we had a banquet at the end of the year recognizing the seven Native American senior students that graduated. And it was, it was wonderful. Yeah, it was great. So thank you to Lynn and all the parents and other family members that make that committee a success.
Thanks, Missy. All right, then my reports, the Wellness Committee doesn't meet again until next September. And like Missy said, Policy will be meeting soon. And then Buildings and Grounds has not formally met, but I know we kind of circle back and talk about the referendum again and review what next steps are going to be there. And then Lincoln School is near completion, so exciting. Matt Lumke.
Yeah, Minnesota High School League met June fourth. They did do some action items for the state level. One of the big changes that they did is they're now going to seed both in boys and girls hockey and then boys and girls basketball, one through eight. It's been a tradition that they would seed the first five and then the three with, the bottom three would be, or that what they project is the bottom three would be just kind of pulled out of a hat and seeded. So now they're just going to seed all eight of them instead of doing it that way. So that was a change that they've made. In wrestling, they changed that the board approved. Again, there's girls wrestling now. And so they have increased the number of girls only events that do not come towards the team's limit of sixteen from four to eight. So they increased that. The other thing is that the member schools voted to amend. This is the, the league's constitution to include ninth grade governance. I know I talked about that before. And like I said before, I thought they were moving in that direction and that's what they're doing. The other thing that they talked about is league staff shared opinions and potential credits that may be available for member schools. And this will be an action item that the board will take in July thirtieth, so we might get a credit back. And so July thirtieth will be their next board meeting. The only other thing that I'll say is that I know for us now that Minnesota School Board Association made, that resolutions have to be adopted by the board. And I think we need to do a board resolution to the legislators, asking them to help finance, because they oversee the Minnesota High School League, that they can finally move into the twenty-first century and have their meetings televised and also have meet, meet deals. So that they don't have to drive all the way down to the cities to meet with the board, that they could actually do it like tremendously. You know, meet, go, or whatever team go, or whatever you want to do. But, and not to say that they don't have the ability to move into the twenty-first century technology. So anyway, that's just a note to self that we should definitely pass one before.
Yes.
Yes, they can watch them.
Yes.
Matt, do you see a downside to adding the ninth graders to the State High School League expectations?
I, we did talk about it. I do in the sense that they're more regulated to the number of games. One of the things that I'm always concerned about is participation. And now all of a sudden now your, your ninth grade is more regulated in the number of games they can have. There's a lot of school districts that will have an A, B game in ninth grade. So you still allow kids to participate. That potential could go away. I know they're more stringent on amount of time that you get and stuff like that. So, I mean, there's just, there's pros and cons. I just, again, just feel that, I understand part of the reason why they're doing it. But I also know that there's some reasons that I would hope they would take in consideration. And then they ultimately can amend what they've done so that there's a little more lenience for the number of games and stuff for ninth graders. I know they're just trying to get away from AAU teams. Again, this will be a metro issue, again, not rule, Minnesota issue of, of athletes. of, of athletes that just go into one sport and then do it year long. And so they might be with their team, but then they go right into a, you know, the same coach could take them and do A A U and stuff like that. So they're trying to not allow that to happen. But I think there is some potential negatives with the change too.
So some of the flexibility of the ninth grade now, where you can have an extra half or, you know, to get more participation and get more kids, some playing time. We'll just have to see how it plays out, I guess.
Awesome. And then Stephen Biggs, staff development.
Uh, I have nothing to report. We don't meet again until the fall.
Okay, and then to Grant and to Drake.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I started out with a recent graduate, but Ellie won a national title in golf for M State. So huge, huge accomplishment. And of course, we continue to be proud of our graduates even once they've left our, our walls here and go on to do great things out in the community. So congratulations to her on a great tournament and wonderful accomplishment. Derek really did a nice job of covering this, so I don't have anything really to add other than a few photos. But a couple of school records were set in track this spring. So congratulations to the four-by-eight-hundred relay. Congratulations to the girls' four-by-one-hundred relay for their school record. And then we did have numerous state qualifiers. Derek did a nice job of recapping their accomplishments down at state. But with that, I wish the golfers good luck in the state tournament coming up later this week. Another notice about the meals, the free meals, breakfast and lunch that are being served. So we hope our community will take advantage of those for our students. Breakfast is being served from eight to nine a.m., Monday through Friday, and then lunch, eleven a.m. until noon. And it's free for all kids ages eighteen and younger. Then the high school put together an informational brochure. This was really well done. And so with appreciation to Mark Anderson and Hannah Lehman, who did a lot of the graphics work on this document, really does a nice job of showcasing many of the wonderful things that go on at Fergus Falls High School. So invite the community to check that out. Invite people in the community that maybe are wondering where they should send their kids next year to check this out. There are many, many wonderful opportunities here in the Fergus Falls Public School District. We have, this was really good news. A couple of weeks ago, we thought that the ship date for the playground equipment that will go out at Lincoln might not take place till mid-August, which should have still allowed for a installation completion prior to the start of the new twenty-four, twenty-five school year. But now that's been revised, and the ship date is projected to be July twenty-third. So we're just happy with a little extra room there to get that installation done. Again, this will be all rubber surface coating, and so it will be accessible to all students. It's really going to be a wonderful feature for kids to play and learn and grow at that site. So we're excited about that. The Promethean boards were delivered to Lincoln a little over a week ago. It's been a few days since I've been out there, but I suspect that they will have been mounted on the walls now, awaiting final connections. We do have a construction meeting this Wednesday, and we're at the point now where we're doing some construction, preliminary construction cleanup. It's not the final cleanup that will take place at the end of the month. And then they are working on, or will be working on, the removal of the firewall, the big firewall that goes east to west in that building, and then making some modifications there. Children's Corner is working with their licensing authority on a temporary relocation for their infant room while that firewall goes down. And then there will be still continued exterior work as we make the connections to Pioneer. But again, I can't wait for the public to be able to see the facility and for our students and staff to enjoy it this fall. We will have to plan for some, a grand opening for that north half of that building, and that will be a wonderful way to kick off the new school year. And with that, I will turn it over to any questions.
Any questions for Superintendent Drake? All right, thank you. Okay, then we'll move into our general consent items. We have our minutes from the May twenty eighth, twenty twenty-four board meeting. And then our bills and treasures report.
Yes, bills and treasures report. Melanie and I came in early today to review the treasures report and thirty-eight pages of bills. We'll start with treasures report. Our fund balance is currently sitting missing without the construction fund, which, which is about six million dollars right now. So we're sitting about twenty-four, just over twenty-four million dollars. A year ago, it was just over twenty million dollars. So it's, our fund balance is, is healthy right now. And Renee recapped in the, in the budget. It's a good thing we have that, a little bit of cushion there because it would be a little bit of a challenge in the next few years with, with some of the changes that have happened with unemployment and with some of the COVID money that's not there anymore. On the bills, again, went through the thirty-eight pages of bills. There was a few highlights that we wanted to cover. There we go. We had cameras and alarms that went in, in a couple of spots over on Roosevelt and Alston Kennedy with brothers, firing security for just over six thousand dollars. A lot of construction bills this month. This is the, the, every other time that we meet, we go through the construction bills. The construction fund was, we paid out just over, just over one-point-seven million dollars for Lincoln Phase Two, including sixty-five thousand to Farmore Acoustics, another fifty-two thousand also to Farmore Acoustics, Fergus Drywell, fifty-seven thousand. Just some of these examples there.
Can I just, five seconds of your time? I have no chief C boiler license for the school district. I passed my test.
Congratulations.
All right. Good job. All right.
She may not put this on your desk.
Okay. We had our annual one-hundred-and-two-thousand dollars that we paid out to the Fergus Falls Police Department for our S R Os. Here's a little one, five thousand dollars for moving boxes. We basically wiped out almost all the moving boxes out of Home Depot as we get ready to move into, into Lincoln.
Those are surprisingly expensive.
Yes. Yep. So those are the, the major expenses that we, we had. And otherwise, it was pretty much business as usual. We did have just under nine thousand dollars for vision concepts to remove some debris and bring some black dirt in over at McKinley at the old mud pipe park. And that would be about it. So thanks to Renee and Melanie for coming in early. And everything's in order as usual. Thank you, Renee.
All right, awesome. Thanks. And personnel, please.
Good morning, everyone. I'm happy to report my, my information is a little bit shorter than normal. So certified staff hire, Jesse Schneeburger, P D teacher, Lincoln and McKinley. At the last board meeting, you remember that we had the resignation of Nathan Dragseth, and there was a little shuffling with staff. And so this is a hire due to that resignation. Certified staff resignation, we have Hannah Bytek, music teacher at Cleveland. Support staff resignation, Amy Christiansen, A L C secretary. She'll be working through the summer months here with our summer programs, but then we'll be ending after that at that point. And then we have individual contracts that are effective for the next two years. That include the accountant, finance officer, food service director, technology specialist, technology manager, technology support, facility supervisor, mechanical supervisor, and community ed director. And I would request approval on those items.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve our general consent items?
Yeah.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion on them? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The general consent items are approved. We do have one item in our, in our old business. Motion to rescind the, the school athletic training and sports medicine services agreement between Fergus Falls Public Schools, I S D five-four-four, and Lake Region Healthcare Corporation effective August first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. And then you'll see in our new business, we're just extending that to a three-year contract versus just the one year. So can I get a motion to rescind that one-year contract?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That is approved. So then we'll move into our new business, and we have a motion to the school athletic training and sports medicine services agreement between Fergus Falls Public Schools, I S D five-four-four, and Lake Region Healthcare Corporation effective August first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven, a three-year contract. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Was that your statement?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is fiscal year twenty-five membership with Minnesota School Board Association, M S B A, and policy services. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I will make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That membership is approved. Our third item is workers' compensation policy through First Dakota Indemnity. Indemnity company for a total estimated cost of ninety-three thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty-nine for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five fiscal year. Can I get a motion to approve that policy?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That is approved. Then we have a commercial insurance policy package through E M C Insurance for a total estimated cost of two-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand dollars for the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five fiscal year, and rejection of the terrorism risk insurance coverage. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That one is approved. Then we have our fiscal twenty-five budget that Renee presented this morning. Can I get a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That budget is approved. We have an engineering services agreement with Interstate Engineering for Roosevelt Armory Parking Lot Resurfacing Project. Can I get a motion to approve that agreement?
So moved.
And a second? Any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That agreement is approved. We have a service agreement between Fergus Falls Public Schools, I S D five-four-four, and Otter Tail County for the transportation of children and youth in foster placement effective July first, twenty twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Can I motion to approve that agreement?
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That agreement is approved. Then we have an annual partnership payment for Otter Tail Family Services Collaborative for fiscal year twenty-four. Can I get a motion to approve that?
So moved.
And a second?
Yes. I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That is approved. We have fiscal year membership with Minnesota Rural Education Association, M R E A. Can I get a motion to approve that membership?
So moved.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That membership is approved. Then we have a resolution, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five resolution for membership in the Minnesota State High School League. Result that the governing board of Fergus Falls Public School District five-four-four located in the state of Minnesota delegates the control, supervision, and regulation of interscholastic activities and athletics referred to in Minnesota Statute, Section one-twenty-eight, C point zero-one, to the Minnesota State High School League and so hereby certifies to the State Commissioner of Education as provided for by Minnesota statutes. Further result that the school listed is authorized by this, the governing board of said school district or school to renew its membership in the Minnesota State High School League and participate in the approved interscholastic activities and athletics sponsored by said league and its various subdivisions. Further result that this governing board or entity hereby adopts the Constitution, bylaws, policies, rules, and regulations of said league, and all amendments thereto as the same are published in the latest edition of the league's official handbook, on file at the office of the school district or school or as appears on the league's website as the minimum standards governing participation in said league-sponsored activities and athletics. Further, the administration and responsibility for determining student eligibility and for the supervision of such activities and athletics are assigned to the official representatives identified by this governing board or entity. Does anyone offer that resolution and refer its adoption?
I'll have the resolution refer its adoption.
And a second?
I'll start with that.
Missy, we need to.
Yes.
Stephen Biggs.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Lindke.
Yes.
Missy Hermes.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Our next meeting scheduled then is Monday, June twenty-fourth at seven fifteen here in the Otter Community Room. Need a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.